I'd like to call the April 6, 2021, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. Thank you again for being with us this evening. If you have a cellphone with you, please put it on silent mode or turn it off. I'm going to read the ethics reminder to the Board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting." All right. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we now come to public comment. And I believe we have about a dozen folks who have signed up to speak to the Board this evening.
Hi, can folks hear me?
Yes.
Great. So hi, I'm Avi. I'm with the Organic Grower School, a nonprofit supporting farmers and gardeners here in western North Carolina. And tonight, I'm speaking out in support of the proposed increase of $500,000 in the budget for land conservation in Buncombe County. I want to thank Terry Wells for bringing forth this proposal. This increased funding towards land conservation is not only a step towards mitigating ongoing climate change and habitat loss, but also an investment in preserving farming and farmland, and ultimately addressing the major issue of food insecurity in Buncombe County. According to Feeding America, there were over 31,000 food insecure people in Buncombe County in 2020, and we know this data is likely underreported. Further, it does not account for the many who may be able to eat but cannot access safe, healthy, or local clean food, let alone be active participants in our food system. To feed more families, we have to support locally and sustainably grown food, or it will never stand a chance against heavily subsidized conventional competitors. To do that, we need to protect farmland. In addition to feeding people, preserving local farmland and farm-adjacent land will ensure that farming, a key part of the landscape of this county, can continue being a livable livelihood for members of our community and a driver of economic development. What are we doing to build the next generation of food growers here, for our county, for our region? It's an important opportunity to invest right in our own backyards for only 0.15% of the county's annual budget. It's also critical that we recognize local sustainable food for what it can be, an emergency preparedness strategy. The U.S. has lost tens of millions of acres of open land to development over the last several decades, including lots of our best farmland. Coupled with the takeover of the farming sector by big ag and large corporate farms, we have now seen that it has eroded the resilience of our food system and made our bodies, communities, and food systems more susceptible to detrimental impacts of crises like COVID-19. We saw how the system driven by profit-seeking corporations led to wasting tons of food while so many were going hungry in this country. On a local level, are we prepared for the next big food emergency? Engels Warehouse only has a two-week supply of food. Some farms are prepared, but not by enough. OGS coordinates the Western North Carolina Collaborative Regional Alliance for Farmer Training, or CRAFT, Apprentice Link and Farm Beginnings, which are three programs that foster collaboration and connection building between farmers at all levels. And we saw that many of our farmers who participated in these networks were really able to pivot their business model quickly, access new market channels to replace lost ones, and ended up having more hyper-local customers than before, which shows the need and the desire to purchase local sustainably grown food. But others are not really prepared. Small-scale farming is more than an idyllic way of life. It's a livelihood that is being made more difficult by misplaced subsidies, and it needs your support. This is also an opportunity to make local farming jobs equitable and accessible to a more diverse group of people, not only in the demand but in the supply of our local food. And as we know, diversity leads to even more resilience locally. COVID showed us how we are all as vulnerable as the least protected in our society, and this is true in so many more ways than infection. I will leave you with a vision of the future. What would it look like if we had thriving farms, healthy land, water, air, fresh, locally-produced food, served in every home, etc.? Now is not the time to be timid in protecting our land resources. We've got what it takes to solve this here. Thank you so much for your time and for this proposal.
Our next person for public comment is Bob Mochan. Bob? Bob, you may begin. Bob, I see that you have unmuted. You may begin. You have three minutes. We'll come back to Bob. Our next person for public comment is Deanna.
It's Deanna, but I'm commenting on the sexual orientation, the SOGI laws, because my concern is that these laws, the laws that are already written, cover discrimination and vote. The laws that are written cover discrimination, and I'm voting against that, and I hope you all do too. It says, "The laws that are SOGI laws that are being passed have no religious exemption. They coerce uniformity of thought and speech on beliefs about marriage, sex, and what it means to be a male and female. SOGI laws create unfair playing fields for women and girls in athletes' business and education. SOGI laws empower the government to punish people who willingly serve everyone but decline to promote messages or celebrate events in conflict with their beliefs. SOGI laws make free speech and religious freedom for a vast number of Americans. And the SOGI, the freedom to live comfortably according to our beliefs is a fundamental right resting on our human dignity and codified by the First Amendment, and it shouldn't be traded away. So I would encourage to vote against that. And it does affect just women's privacy. SOGI laws force sex-specific facilities, like the Women's Shelter for survivors of domestic violence, opened by a Massachusetts pastor. The nonprofit was forced to take legal action to stop men who identify as women access to changing rooms and living facilities of the vulnerable women who he was seeking to help. And also, I just hope and pray that we vote against that, because I don't think it's going to help. It's already covered under our rights and laws that we have. Thank you very much."
Bob, are you able to speak at this time? Bob, are you there? We'll come back to Bob. Our next speaker will be Don Yelton, to be followed by Eva Stewart.
I need to unmute myself.
You're unmuted.
Okay, good. So you can hear me, because I'm out here in the street, and that's where the citizens are at, out here in the traffic, with cars running up and down. I know you all are going to talk about that a little bit today, but I don't think you all want to hear what citizens have to say, because you've done said, you can't call out a commissioner individually. You have to address all of them individually. So all I want to talk about is the simple fact that we had a city manager put out a release in their 30, 60, 90-day plan to remove two Confederate monuments and rename the streets. So that came from the city of Asheville, and it was pushed through with the folks in Asheville. And it was pushed then on the county commissioner, so everybody can say, oh, everybody wants it done. And it was done up front. It was done because when the Board looked at it, was picked, you had to be committed to repurposing or tear it down. I won't talk about people that's on that Board and their connections to the county commissioner, because everybody's able to see that. So it's basically a snow job from day one. And I want you to realize, the more you push that, the more you're creating a division between the races, pure and simple. But you don't want to hear that, you don't care about it, you're going to do what you're going to do. But I will call you out in other forms. Thank you very much for the opportunity. By the way, there's another little hidden thing on this deal about plugging cars in. You know, it's supposed to save money and everything, but you're going to have to increase the power bill, because if you put more of these plug-in car sites in the county garage, your electric bill's going to go up. Now, does that electricity just created out of the air? I don't think so. I think it comes from fossil fuels, because we know what happened to solar in Texas. These are just something you all need to think about, and have a good day. And I look like I've got one, two, and one on the way. Three people out here besides me, so that's four. It's growing a little bit, so the more it gets, the better it's going to be. Goodbye.
Eva, you are our next speaker for public comment.
My name is Eva Stewart, and I've been a resident of Buncombe County for 16 years and a business owner for 16 years. I listened to the public comments on March 16, and I read the proposed ordinance on nondiscrimination that was spoken about, and I strongly oppose it because it's not fair. We can all agree that people are valuable, regardless of their hairdo, their race, religion, sexual identity, disability, etc. No one should be bullied or harassed for how they look or what they believe. Yet this ordinance not only bullies people who hold different ideas about sexual identity, but even worse, it penalizes any direct or indirect business decision that I make as to whether I hire or not hire a person who fits into one of these categories. They will use it as a weapon against me. And I can be penalized thousands of dollars and be sued by them for forcing me to hire an attorney. And then in this process, I could lose my savings, my business, my home. This ordinance will limit my freedom as a North Carolina at-will employer. Instead of creating jobs and finding the right fit for my business, I will be encouraged to leave Buncombe County or lose my hard-earned assets. I would like to know how the commissioners intend to solve conflicts between two protected classes, religious organizations and home builders who have religious beliefs as to how to run a business. This ordinance has an inherent conflict because it offers an exemption for religious organizations on hiring, but not for people like me, a home builder, who is being compelled by this ordinance to participate against my deeply-held religious beliefs by hiring a transgender person. It is a violation of my constitutional First Amendment right. Also, it is not fair to expose transgender people to a male-dominated construction site, believe me. This broad-sweeping ordinance is dangerous, not only to the economy of Buncombe County, but also it will boomerang to cause greater harassment and division to our transgender population, which is less than 1% in North Carolina. Right now, their complaint is that they are living in fear of an attack and discrimination, which is not good. But I fear even worse for them, that this ordinance will actually create physical violence to them. We already have laws against that, and rightly so. You know, I value the diversity in our county, but there must be more dialogue over this and protection for all people, even who have a different set of beliefs. Thank you.
Grant, you are our next speaker for public comment. Grant, you are our next. Grant Millen is next, followed by John Grant.
Hi, my name is Grant Millen, and I'm a longtime Buncombe resident. My family moved here in 1980. We were part of developing downtown Asheville gerbat into what it is today. And I just wanted to comment on that. I've sent you, I've commented about persons with disabilities quite a lot with City of Asheville. Now you all are going into the equity and inclusion policymaking realm, and this nondiscrimination policy is just one example. What that woman just said a minute ago, there is some untruth in there in that protected classes aren't businesses. Because if everybody is a protected class, no one is a protected class. African-Americans, persons with disabilities are protected classes, and it should be, I believe, LGBTQ folks are protected class too. This nondiscrimination policy, I'm not saying there shouldn't be a nondiscrimination policy that's for LGBTQ folks, but when you lumped in the disabled, now you'll have to prove to me, at least, because there really are, they're very weak, there's a very weak advocacy universe for the disabled in Buncombe County, I'm afraid. I don't know how you're going to do things in an employment realm for the disabled. I think it's just for LGBTQ folks. And the disabled can be, a disabled person can be an LGBTQ person. A disabled person can be a veteran, of course. And I'm going to talk in the future, hopefully I'm going to get a chance to talk more in the future about how the disabled fit in with equity inclusion and things like changing public safety approaches of public safety. I want to talk, in the few seconds I have left, I want to talk about the $35,000 for the Vision document as to what happens after the Vance Monument is gone. I have an article on that subject. I have an art piece that's patriotic, and it's interesting to go in there. And by going first, I've kind of set the bar higher. It's actually a good thing, because I'm giving people a contrast to how Deborah Campbell will do things with that consulting job. And I look forward to sharing more later. Bye.
John Grant, you are our next speaker, to be followed by John Horner.
Good evening, Chairman Newman and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. My name is John H. Grant, and I'm speaking this evening on behalf of the Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance concerning the nondiscrimination ordinance. We have essentially five concerns about, our concerns are in five areas about this ordinance. Number one, a lack of community engagement. We do not believe our community has been given enough opportunity to discuss and ask questions about the ordinance. Two, inclusivity. All segments of our community should be given adequate opportunity to have their voices heard before a final vote is taken. Equitability. Does this ordinance against discrimination for one or more groups in our community discriminate against other groups in our community? Number four, freedom of speech. Does this ordinance clearly protect every citizen's right to freedom of speech while not violating the rights of any? And last, number five, is freedom of religion. Does this ordinance clearly protect every citizen's freedom of religion and does not violate the freedom of religion of any? We respectfully request that you, as our representatives, delay your scheduled vote on this ordinance to allow ample time for our community to engage and to ask questions and to get feedback from our elected representatives, which are what you are, of course. Specifically, on page four of the ordinance, G, as it addresses the exception, it mentions that this ordinance shall not apply to a religious corporation, association, educational institution. Our concern is with that language. We don't know what you mean by a religious corporation or religious association. We have some thoughts in our mind, but many of our churches are not incorporated. So does that mean that that church would not qualify as a religious corporation? And then it goes on to talk about that the work performed has to be connected with the carrying on by such corporation. And our concern is also who defines what connected is. It just seems to us that there's a lot of vagueness here, and we just appeal to you to give the community an opportunity to be engaged before you pass a law or finalize this ordinance that's going to affect all the citizens of our community. And I thank you, we thank you, on behalf of the Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance of Asheville and Vicinity. Thank you so much for hearing us and for giving us this opportunity to address you. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be John Horner, to be followed by Karen Horner.
Yes, I'm about this anti-discrimination ordinance. I think it's looking for a problem that doesn't exist. They already have discrimination laws, anti-discrimination laws. And I think this puts a burden on a business owner, especially. It's going to be something like he said, she said. And I think it would tie up. I agree that there shouldn't be discriminations against LGBTQ people, but it shouldn't be a special category. It should fall under discrimination laws. And this would tie up a business owner, time in court. It could be not necessarily just the business owner, it could be even a church. And so I think that this is just an unnecessary piece of legislation. I think if you looked at the laws as they currently exist, and I'm sure they're in Asheville, that there are laws against discriminations of all type, it would be wise to just enforce these laws and not single out a group for special protection. And this is something that I just think would be wise to not pass. And beyond that, I, without repeating myself, just say this is what I feel is true. So I'm going to yield the rest of my time to someone else. Thank you.
All right, the next caller is Karen Horner, to be followed by Superintendent Ron Gates.
Hello, this is Karen. Thank you, Chairman Newman and the Board, for this opportunity to address you concerning the proposed SOGI ordinance. My base concern is that this is an overreach of a governing body to institute a perceived bias on a community. I do agree that there are instances of discrimination, whether intended or unintended in our community, but I disagree with a blanket assumption about our county. I was born here, educated, and worked providing care for the underserved and those in need of health care in many different settings in western North Carolina. With concerted time in Buncombe County, I'm familiar with LGBTQ individuals for whom I provided care as a nurse practitioner. Personally, I see a disconnect between the discrimination you have cited and what I have actually observed in the health care arenas in our county. Having this background, these questions are at the forefront. Please outline the research you conducted in Buncombe County to ferret out the discrimination in our county. How many people did you randomly interview as to this discrimination? Did you interview a wide swath of community residents? How did you control for your own perceived biases? Why such a short time for consideration for this ordinance? I would venture to say a board would allot six months or greater to consider such an ordinance as far-reaching and seek input from the public. Why so many co-groups within the ordinance? Most have protection under the law. Please give me two to three case scenarios of how this ordinance would be administered from beginning accusation to mediation. Walk me through from beginning to end how a claim of discrimination would be submitted, verified, and mediated. Would it be one person's word against another? Can this ordinance be rescinded if it proves burdensome to the community and how? What is the cost of setting up and enforcing this ordinance? Where will these monies be assessed? Cases have been adjudicated through the Supreme Court as to individuals who provide services who are sued by same-sex couples, etc. Would this ordinance open persons to a suit like this? Is a pastor who objects to performing same-sex marriages open for litigation in this ordinance? My recommendation is...
Your time is ended.
Thank you.
Next speaker will be Superintendent Ronald Gates, to be followed by Bob Mochan.
Thank you again, facilitator, and thank you for this opportunity, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Superintendent Ronald Gates. I'm the senior pastor of Greater Works Church of God in Christ, also affiliated with the IMA, which is a numerous amount of churches that are here in the Asheville area. I want to definitely echo the same concerns and observation that I stand in collaboration with my colleagues that was drafted in the concerns of the five areas in which Dr. Grant shared so eloquently about. I want to say this again in regards to those five areas and looking at this ordinance of discrimination. It is a grave concern. Now, as the senior pastor of Greater Works Church of God in Christ, I want to share with you my sentiments, and that I oppose it due to the simple fact of the lack of transparency and the full disclosure. There's a lot of gray areas that ties into a lot of information with this ordinance, and I want to oppose it because of my religious freedom and my freedom of speech and our business practice. So I thank you that you had the opportunity, gave us the opportunity to share about this. I share with you the same as the lady before me, that this should take time. It shouldn't be warp speed, as we have said, but it should take time of speaking with individuals throughout the community. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to speak with you. Bye-bye.
Bob Mochan, you are our final speaker. Bob, can you unmute yourself? It looks like you're having trouble unmuting yourself. There you go. However, we still cannot hear you. I believe you're going to call in using the call-in number. We can see you, however, we cannot hear you. You're going to see about having Bob call in to join us. Yes, we can.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. I apologize, I just didn't have the right code to put in. And I'll make this real quick, and I do want to discuss and talk about the ordinance prohibiting discrimination in employment and public accommodations. I have lived in the Asheville area now since 2005. I've had a 35-year-plus year in corporate reorganization specialist consulting in 21 industries, both in the U.S. and in Europe. And this ordinance causes me a great deal of consternation, especially for the business sector of our community. And the last thing we want to do is create a hardship for business owners, entrepreneurs, individuals wanting to come to this area to invest in our, in our communities. And I've read over the proposals and immediately there's some alarms that do go off. Right away, the very title, ordinance prohibiting discrimination in employment and public accommodations. That's just a screen, a smokescreen. My first thought is what are they covering up? Because in my 30, almost over 35 years of employment or working with 21 industries, discrimination was not an issue. We always looked for diversity of anyone that was capable in both character and qualifications. And that was just, this is something that's been, I think, taken and blown way out of perspective. Most ordinances and proposals for cities and counties are one to one and a half pages. So when I saw this thing was five pages long, I said, I better read this thing more carefully. So, so, you know, the Civil Rights Act of 1964 was to protect against anyone's sex, race, color, religion, and national origin. And that has gone a tremendous way toward reducing discrimination. In 1964, it was 86% of both blacks and whites did not condone or accept interracial marriages. Today, that, that percentage is around eight, 78%. So racial discrimination and other discriminations have been dramatically reduced in our nation. I just believe that this is going to create tremendous amount of legalities and legal complications for business owners. And I have had business owners asking me about coming to Buncombe County and Asheville, and I've told them they better have their eyes open. And I've known of business owners that have sold their businesses in Asheville and have moved to Tennessee or adjacent counties. We do not want to make it more difficult for business owners in Buncombe, in Buncombe County. Thank you for your time.
That concludes our public comments.
All right, thank you. Okay. Next up, we have, under presentations, we have a proclamation regarding child abuse awareness prevention. And Commissioner Amanda Edwards is going to read the proclamation, and I believe Stony Blevins will receive it. He may not be here, I'm not sure.
County of Buncombe proclamation of child abuse prevention month. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. Whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community. Whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential. Whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas it is vital that we join forces with the Child Protection Team of Buncombe County and Mountain Child Advocacy Center Incorporated to reach out to parents and children to prevent child sexual abuse and neglect, and to strengthen families and children who have experienced abuse. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows, that the month of April 2021 be proclaimed Child Abuse Prevention Month in Buncombe County. That this board does hereby call upon every citizen to join the child protection organizations, groups, and individuals in observance of the month with appropriate programs and activities. That this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this sixth day of April 2021.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners and to county leadership for your work to support safe and healthy childhoods in Buncombe County. My name is Drew Schelfer. I'm a social work supervisor where I oversee the intake process, and I've been with the county for about 15 years. In 2020, 2,869 separate reports of child maltreatment were accepted for investigation, and child maltreatment was found in 497 of those cases. As you know, positive connections are vital in building safe, stable, nurturing environments for Buncombe County children. So we ask the community to report suspected child abuse and neglect in Buncombe County by calling our intake hotline at 828-250-5900, and we are open 24/7. Our team is always here to support children and families in Buncombe County. Buncombe County partners with the Mountain Child Advocacy Center to serve children who have been abused and neglected in Buncombe County through a range of different services. We also partner to raise awareness of child abuse and neglect and to recognize those in our community who work tirelessly to protect and support children. To that end, I would like to introduce Leslie Hanson, a board member of the Mountain Child Advocacy Center.
The mission of Mountain Child Advocacy Center is to identify and respond to child abuse and neglect in Buncombe County, to educate and empower the public to protect children and to reduce the trauma through a coordinated community effort. To remind you of our mission, you'll find a bag on your desk with a pinwheel pen inside, a pinwheel sticker, and a pinwheel screen cleaner. The pinwheel is a symbol of a happy and carefree childhood, and we believe that every child deserves a safe and happy childhood. During Child Abuse Prevention Month, the Mountain Child Advocacy Center recognizes those that have made significant contributions to our mission in our community. This year, Mountain CAC presented awards to two of our multidisciplinary team members to acknowledge their excellence in child abuse casework. Leah Stevens, licensed social worker and forensic interviewer with the Mission Child Safety Team, and Assistant District Attorney Amy Broughton. Mountain CAC also recognizes a person in the community whose efforts support the well-being of children. For her dedication and service to children through her work founding and leading the Mission Child Safety Team, Mountain CAC is proud to recognize Dr. Cynthia Brown as the champion for children for 2021. Child abuse has been a hidden but prevalent problem in our area, but the pandemic has caused a child abuse crisis. We are grateful to the Board of Commissioners for your concern and your support and for your acknowledgement of the hard work of the Mountain Child Advocacy Center, our law enforcement agencies, the Child Safety Team, and the Buncombe County Social Work Services.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here today to talk about this important effort to raise awareness in our community. Thank you so much. All right. The next item on our agenda, we've got two public hearings. The first is for the consideration of the Systems Logistics Corporation, and Tim Love will get us started on this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. This evening, we're considering a public hearing with the System Logistics Corporation. As per usual, I've got some slides to get us through the presentation, but additionally, I wanted to introduce you to a few folks in the audience. With us today, we have two members of the System Logistics Team, or SLC Team. That's Stefano Vitale, as well as Ben Gagoff. Additionally, y'all are familiar with Clark Duncan from the EDC. He's also here with us today. So we'll go ahead and get started, and Max, if you, thank you. In terms of background and request related to today's public hearing, in January of 2020, SLC announced it had chosen Buncombe County for its expansion. For those unfamiliar with SLC, SLC is a global supplier of material handling solutions for warehouses, distribution centers, and manufacturing operations. That's a lot of words, but today Stefano will sort of clarify what that means in real terms. Additionally, this is a local plant. Systems, SLC has been in Arden for a number of years and currently employs 124 folks with a special focus on the food and beverage industry. The request today before the board is to approve the economic development incentives for SLC, as well as the economic development agreement between SLC and Buncombe County. By way of just helping everyone understand where we are, the site location here in red for SLC, this is in Arden, off of Brevard Road 191. You may be familiar with the industrial park there. Also, not too far away from Boar Warner and Thermo Fisher, which you can also see on this map. The scope of the project, again, investing in an existing plant here in Arden, North Carolina, retaining 124 jobs but also adding an additional 47 jobs. The capital investment for this project is about $3 million in renovations to the building, as well as the purchase of additional equipment. I'd also note that SLC will be purchasing the building that they currently lease, which is an important step for the company's long-term retention here in Buncombe County. Finally, and very important, the average wages that SLC offers are really great to see in our community. An average wage of almost $67,000 annually, which is about $32 an hour. And also, Stefano will speak to this later, but a starting wage of no less than $15 an hour for any position that is employed here in Arden. The big green tagline, just a reminder, this aligns to the Buncombe 2025 strategic plan, specifically around continuing to drive our average wages higher to catch up with North Carolina averages, but additionally, to grow employment in specific industries. And this industry today is the professional and IT sector, so we're really excited about that opportunity. With that said, I'd like to invite Stefano to come join me at the podium so that he can take an opportunity to tell you more about the project, what SLC does here. And so I will hand off the mic.
That's the right one, yeah?
Yep, that's right.
So thank you, everyone, for hosting me. My name is Stefano Vitale. I am President and CEO of System Logistics Corporation. As Tim was saying, we're based here in Arden. We are, System Logistics is an Italian company based in the north of Italy, 250-plus million revenue last year. We are part of a German group listed at the Frankfurt Stock Exchange, and here in Arden, we are our headquarters for the northern and southern America business. So, exactly, this is our American cluster. We moved here in 2016 by acquiring a local company, Vertiquel, an existing company from ITW, an American multinational company. And at that time, the company we acquired was consisting of 65 employees. Revenue were in the range of $25 million. So we have been investing in this company since a long time. We have been able to grow the business, and we are now in this additional step we have to make because we are acquiring the building, and for us, it's an investment in the range of $8, $9 million. And in addition to that, our plan is also to grow in terms of employees. The under 22 is the number of employees at the end of December last year, under 24 in slide projected by Tim from the beginning of the year. So, and the 47 you saw in, listed in the presentation are only related to, let's say, senior engineers, senior technicians, but we are also plans to hire other people as we have been doing in the last five years. Talking about System Logistics, yeah, I understand it's difficult to pass the message of what we do, but it's, everything is related to the automation of warehouses is our job. We're talking about large distribution centers or warehouses related to production, big production facilities. Our main customers are worldwide, are Coca-Cola, Pepsi, Nestle, so we are specialized in the food and beverage industry. All the equipment you see here, so automated guided vehicles, shuttles, elevators, is, or conveyors, simple conveyors, are all the equipment necessary to, let's say, to, to obtain a full automated warehouse. And you can imagine, as of today, how is actual this topic because you can think to all the e-commerce companies like Amazon. So we are exactly where the business is growing, and, and this is what we are doing here in Arden. And in the U.S. and in America, we promote European technology, but also we manufacture and we design American technology, and this is the reason we acquired Vertiquel years ago. And we have been able to attract people not only in this area, but we have many families relocating, Ben moved from Michigan, relocating from other states here in the area, but also we are in touch with the local university, with Western North Carolina University. Last year, we hired, I think, five engineers who graduated from the university, from the college, and also we are hiring here people just to support the growth, the growth of our business. I don't think there is much more to say. Just thank you, thank you to Tim, April, who is not here today, and anybody who helped us to complete this process. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Stefano, for sharing with us kind of that experience. I think exciting to hear about how the company's doubled in a little less than a couple years under the leadership of this team. In terms of the economic development agreement, which is the purpose of today's public hearing, the incentive structure for this agreement, it's on the screen, it's a total incentive of $100,000. As is typical in our agreements, the incentive payout occurs after the performance commitments are met, so pay-for-performance deal. There is no incentive for the existing 124 jobs. We assume that those are staying. It's built into the agreement for retention purposes, but I just wanted to clarify that. The term of this agreement is a total of five years. There's a three-year creation period, so that's the ramp-up period to invest and hire, followed by a two-year retention period to maintain the existing footprint. As I said earlier, this is a pay-for-performance structure, so if the SLC team comes up short in terms of certain measures, there would be a pro-rata applied to that based on the actual performance. This is all documented in the economic development agreement. In terms of the build-out schedule, it's again a three- In terms of the build-out schedule, it's, again, a three-year schedule, so you can see how the jobs are coming in. It's a pretty even spread. Year one, 17 jobs, 15 jobs, 15 jobs. You can also see the investment, you know, fairly evenly spread throughout, and you can see in the far two right columns, the payout in terms of 50K per, for jobs, and for investment for a total of 100K of a one-time incentive. You know, we've talked about kind of overall, like, what the project is about, but what's the actual impact in our community. You know, so the jobs are clear, you know, high-wage jobs, investment that creates tax revenue. This deal cash flows in about three years, based on the analysis we've done, depending on how a tax rate comes in. But additionally, you know, those are our direct impacts. There's also indirect and induced impacts that we see, you know, as we talk about business-to-business transactions, you know, the local suppliers that work with SLC and the benefit that we have there, but also the benefit, of course, of the employees and their ability to sort of spend in our community, purchase homes, things like that. And so when you look at that total impact, you get a larger impact, which is right under $6 million over that three-year period. So, always like to reference that, but that is separate from the tax revenue calculations that we typically look at when we determine a cash flow. With that said, I'd like to invite Clark Duncan to come to be, to provide some additional context on this project and how it fits in. Once that's concluded, we'll turn it back to you to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Tim. Chairman Newman, members of the Commission, thank you for having me this evening, and thank you for your continued leadership on economic expansion here in Buncombe County. So, beyond what I see as the urgent importance for job creation in engineering and technology and manufacturing career paths, beyond even the extraordinary wages that have been discussed here tonight, an employer paying, on average, 60% average wage of Buncombe County residents, and beyond the investment in our tax base, which will fund the priorities of this commission, I think it's also important to recognize the rest of the story of System Logistics Corporation, which has a long and storied history here in Buncombe County. It was actually in 1997, when a family of entrepreneurs built the current facility in Vista Industrial Park, which you'll recall, at that point in time, nearly 25 years ago, was a sleepy, one-stop-sign intersection at the corner of Long Shoals and Brevard Road. Vertiqu, as it was then known, was an up-and-coming enterprise in the emerging field of automated warehouse storage systems. But in the intervening nearly 25 years, the original 50,000-square-foot building grew to 120,000 square feet. It then grew to 150,000 square feet. The company announced a $15 million expansion in 2004, and were later merged with Systems Logistics Corporation in 2016. So, with your support tonight, Stefano and Ben and their leadership team are building on a well-established foundation here in our community. In many ways, it affirms the strategy of Buncombe County, supporting both our manufacturing community, as well as our local entrepreneurs, that we hope to have a similar level of success. It also serves to counter voices, both locally or nationally, that may have an antiquated view of American manufacturing, and it's a critical importance to economic mobility in communities such as ours. The nearly 50 new jobs discussed here tonight will run the gamut from production technicians to technical sales and service roles, to engineers and project managers, and a large number of PLC software programmers. In fact, 75% of all employees at SLC under roof today are in a professional or a technical capacity. The company funds 80% of the rising cost of employee healthcare and offers a 50% match to 401K savings that encourage wealth creation for retirement. Most interesting to me, with a background in human resources, is this company boasts a retention rate of 95%, which speaks to the culture and workplace that this company and this leadership team has built over the years. This is precisely the kind of employer that will help the next generation stay and build careers and build their lives here in Buncombe County. So, on behalf of the EDC staff and board, the Chamber Board as well, thank you for your leadership and support of Systems Logistics this evening, and your support of the idea that better jobs build a stronger community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Clark.
All right. Chairman, Commissioners, that's all we have, unless you have any questions, but otherwise, would ask you to open the public hearing.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions at this time? All right. I'm going to open the public hearing on the proposed economic development agreement at 5:59 PM. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the proposed economic development agreement?
Chairman, no one signed up for a public comment for this public hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right. Then I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:00 PM. And Commission, are there any questions, or is there a motion regarding the resolution for the economic development agreement?
Second.
Further discussion? All right. Well, before we vote, I just would like to say, Stefano, thank you so much for being with us this evening. We really appreciate having this company in our community, and we congratulate you on the success and the growth, and we are glad to see that this remains, this company remains having a very bright and growing future in Western North Carolina and in Asheville. So, thank you so much for being here, and best wishes on your future success as well, and congratulations to all of your employers who helped make all that, make all that possible. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Next up, we have consideration of another public hearing regarding the COVID paid time off extension, and Michael Frue will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is a simple ask, but it's in the personnel ordinance and a benefit, which is your purview, and it requires a public hearing. So, last year, this board amended the personnel ordinance to allow the award of up to two weeks of COVID PTO to those employees who demonstrated extraordinary personal and professional sacrifice of time and effort in operating the EOC and the county government between March 12th and May 31st. Those employees who were awarded that leave were asked to make sure they use it or lose it by June 30th of 2021. Because of the nature of the pandemic, and it's gone on so long, it's been difficult for many of those employees to arrange in their schedule with their supervisors and departments to use that time by that date. And so this is a request to change their use-by date to extend the awarded leave to be used by June 30th, 2022. And just ask that you open the public hearing, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
All right, terrific. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:02 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the proposal?
No one registered for public comment for the public hearing.
All right, thank you. Let's close the public hearing at 6:03 PM. Commissioners, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second Amanda's.
Okay.
Motion.
Parker will second Amanda's motion. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frue. Okay, we now come to the county manager's report?
No report, sir.
All right, very good. Now, old business. The first item under old business is a follow-up discussion regarding the Asheville City Schools DPI facility report. And is Shane Cassidy from the City Schools here? Is anybody here? It's just virtual, okay.
Commissioner Newman, thank you for the chance to get to meet with you guys, and I appreciate the flexibility to let me attend virtually. This is our spring break week for Asheville City Schools, so I will be representing the school system tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to answer any questions that you've had, as we presented the DPI study to the Commissioners for sign-off this past month. And this time, I'll take any other comments or questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you for calling into us over spring break.
I'm a little, I will turn my video on if I need to. I was a little afraid that my signal would be, not be good enough, and it would cut me off. So, if I need to turn the video on, I certainly can.
That's all right, that's all right. It's, we hear you loud and clear, so that's fine.
Good.
So, Commissioners, you know, we had this presentation last week. Of course, you know, there's been some questions and concerns about the Asheville Primary School. The document, which, each of the districts in Buncombe County is required to present their plans to the county commissioners, as well as send them to the state. So, that has happened. After the presentation, I am asked to sign a statement basically saying that this has been presented to us. It also has language in it, though, that clearly states that just by signing that document, we are not necessarily endorsing the plans outlined by the district, but merely documenting the fact that it's been presented. But there, of course, have been concerns about the Asheville Primary School, so I think the Commission wanted to have some additional time to just ask any questions about that issue in particular, or any others. So, are there any other specific questions at this time? I don't believe, and Mr. Frue, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe the Commission actually needs to vote on any matter related to this, this evening. I just, but I want to make sure everyone is aware. I will sign the document that basically says the information has been presented to the Commission.
That's correct, sir.
So, no votes required, but this is an opportunity to ask any other questions about the school's plans for its facilities over the next five years. I guess, I guess just, you know, I'll just jump in with one. Shane, I guess, one question, just from a process standpoint, regarding the proposal to close the Asheville Primary School. I think in the, in the presentation at the last meeting, it was discussed how the schools are going through it. There's a specific process, from what was explained, for closing, for kind of formally closing a school in North Carolina. So, could you just say anything else about where you're at, where the school district is at in that process? Is it, is it, is the school board still yet to make, are any additional decisions still to be made by the school district, or is this considered a process that's already been completed?
Sure. So, what I can, what I can tell you is that, at the same night that we presented to you at the Commissioners' meeting, the Board held a special, special meeting, a Nashville City School Board, where a, a study had been done that proposes the closure of the school and the reasons for that closure. And so, that, that study was presented. That's, that's something that's formally done, and then the Board considers that, and then the Board will be making their final recommendation during our April meeting, is my understanding. That would be the next step, according to our legal counsel.
Okay.
Now, in terms of closing the school, North Carolina also has some additional steps with the Department of Public Instruction, in terms of formally going through that process with them, in terms of closure of school number, and forfeiting of a school number, and sort of those procedural pieces. But that's the, that's the next piece that's there. Certainly, enrollment has already been done for this year, and the students are being placed currently. Now, the Board could tell the school system, or tell the enrollment department to open enrollment back up and include Asheville Primary if they chose to change their, their decision based on that study.
Okay. But it, so understood about the enrollment, but the, you do, the expectation is that the next Asheville City School Board meeting, there will be a vote taken by the Asheville City School Board to, to affirm the plan to close the school?
That, that is my understanding, yes.
Okay. You know, one of the other, I mean, a lot of the, of course, the parents of kids who go there, and, you know, are, have expressed concerns about the closure of the school and changes. One of the other concerns that's arisen, I think, kind of more recently, is the potential displacement of other pre-K facilities and operations operated by other organizations in the community. If the pre-K classes at Asheville Primary School, if the school's closed and they're relocated to other facilities, that it could displace other organizations' existing pre-K classrooms. Has it been determined that there is a definite plan, that if the Asheville Primary School is closed, that it will not result in any loss of classroom, pre-K classrooms in Asheville or Buncombe County?
Yes. This past week, we toured, and I say we, so Dr. Freeman, Melissa Hitt, Susannah Smith, who is over our pre-K program, and myself, along with Don Sims, the Director of Facilities and Grounds. We toured several locations, again, to see if we could rework some other classrooms within our own buildings, our own Asheville City School buildings. We were able to locate two additional rooms there. So, in effect, those, gaining of those two extra spaces in our own building, my understanding is, that would allow for no spec, no one to be displaced out of any current location. I do, and that would allow us to maintain all of our 11 classrooms from the pre-COVID year that we're hoping to achieve. So, that is, that is, again, as of last week, we were able to make, make those moves happen, that we, we think will be able to work. The only issue would be, in hopes of expansion, I do believe that at PVA, Dr. Freeman was wanting to potentially look at PVA, and I do believe Verner has a couple of classrooms that are there at PVA that will be vacated at some point. I think Verner is waiting on a, another facility to be built, and that construction to be completed. And so, I think, when they are able to move to their new location, those classrooms in PVA, Dr. Freeman, I think, had hoped or expressed the, the desire to try to expand into those two classrooms.
Let me, let me repeat that if you didn't hear that. Where would the Verner pre-K classrooms be relocated to if they are displaced from Pisgah?
I'm not exactly sure where. My understanding is, Verner is building a new center somewhere in, within Buncombe County. So, they were going to be moving one way or the other. It's not that they're moving because Asheville City Schools is looking to move into those rooms. I think those are rooms that are going to be made available when they move. I think the move was actually planned to occur sometime this summer, but I believe construction delays. When I spoke with the, the classroom teacher there at Verner, there were delays due to COVID, and so they've been pushed back. I believe, I believe she said, mid-fall is when they were expecting to, to make the move.
Okay. So, in the interim, there might not be a place for that to go?
Right. So, that would proclude any expansion at the moment, but it would allow us to get back to the original 11 with no loss of any classroom spaces for the pre-K classrooms. The Asheville City Schools had pre-COVID.
Yep. Okay. Commissioner Whiteside has a question.
Yes. Hi, Shane.
Hey, Al.
Question I have, it was some talk today at our early childhood committee meeting about displacing a classroom in the Head Start, a Head Start classroom at the Lonnie Burton Center. Where are you with that?
So, yeah. So, originally, I think the plan that Dr. Freeman had turned in sought four classroom spaces there at the Lonnie D. Burton Center, which would have displaced potentially two Head Start class, classrooms. So, my understanding is, now that we've been able to locate these other spaces in our buildings, Commissioner Whiteside, that we would be able to now not have to do that. I think there's one space that's currently available. that we would be able to now not have to do that. I think there's one space that's currently available that no one is in, that we would be able to go into in Lonnie Burton. And then there's also going to be an additional room that'll be available coming in, in the summer as well. Again, with no displacement to Head Start.
Is that final, Shane? Because, you know, every time I hear from you guys or we hear from you, it's changing.
I, I understand. And I know that's, that's frustrating and I apologize for that. And, and I want you to know that I think the, the board and, and Asheville City Schools, the pre-K department in particular, they've, they've taken, you know, very seriously the urgency not to displace anybody. And they certainly want to act on that and move on that. And so I can, I can tell you that as, as we left last Thursday, Commissioner Whiteside, that, that was, that was the plan. And, and we would not, we would not have to make any of those, those, those displacements.
All right. Are there other questions from commissioners?
Hi, this is Jasmine Beach Farrar. Thank you for joining us on your spring break. Just following up on Commissioner Whiteside's question, line of questions. What, how can we best get clarity around the final plan? And I appreciate hearing you say tonight that as of last Thursday, that there was a new updated plan that avoided displacement, which is certainly a goal. But I'm just wondering from the county perspective, how we can get a clear final answer about what the plan will be, whether there's displacement. And, and also, as part of that, you know, I really do hope there will continue to be opportunities to discuss the future of the Asheville Primary School Building itself. I understand that this school system has storage needs, but a building situated in that way, so close to so many children and families at the heart of the West Asheville Corridor, along public transportation, is not the kind of facility we can manufacture easily or relocate easily, whereas storage can happen almost anywhere. I'd be happy to go look for storage sites myself. So I really, I guess, two parts to that. One is when we can expect a final plan with the ink dry on it. And then two is really just every time we have this conversation, I'll keep saying the same thing about the Asheville Primary School Facility itself and, and really advocating for us coming up with a purpose for that building that will serve the highest, highest best needs, the highest needs of our community in the best ways, I should say. And, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing on this in, in your capacity.
Absolutely. Commissioner, I appreciate that. And so my understanding, again, I want to make sure that I couch that by saying this is, this is how it was, it was when we left on Thursday, that we would present that plan to the board. And as they approve that plan, plus the closure of the building, then we would be able to present that to, to, to the commissioners and let, and to the Early Childhood Committee and let you know, because obviously we need to let our families know as well, too. I will tell you that the additional classrooms that we were able to push and were into both Vance and into Hall Fletcher. So those are, those, you know, the majority of the rooms that'll be available on the pre-K side will, will maintain in the West Asheville area. And so we will not, not be displacing them across a large, a large move, but it would be within, you know, two miles of their current location. But I understand what you're saying about the availability on, on public transit. That's obviously a key, a key factor. We want to make sure that we are able to offer transportation next year. And so that's something that we are ensuring that we'll offer transportation to all, to all families to any of our sites. And that's a, that's something that we're, we're committed to.
Mr. Whitesides?
I have, I have one more question, Shane. I'd like to ask. You know,
Okay.
This year has been the pandemic, the last year and a half. And you all are moving these classrooms, you know, moving the pre-K into the rooms that you have available. What happens in August if kids who were out stayed at home because of the pandemic show up at school? Are you going to have room for them?
So, so currently, you know, I think when we talked last time, I gave some enrollment numbers. And again, I was, I used to be over the enrollment department, oh, about a year ago. And that was, that was moved to a different part of the organization. So I can't speak with, with 100% accuracy. But obviously during COVID, I think I showed you that we were down, you know, 200-plus students. As we have been enrolling, certainly, we've had a very large, robust enrollment. But even with that robust enrollment, we're still not quite back to the pre-COVID levels. Now, you're certainly right. Obviously, you know very well from your time with Asheville City Schools, you know, August really tells the tale of, of how many students we're going to have. Certainly with the, with, with everybody coming back, which is how we projected those opening in each of the buildings we were looking at, we were still under capacity in those, in those facilities. So yes, we do think we'll be able to accommodate if, if everyone chose to come back. That's a very good question.
All right. Commissioners, are there any other questions? So it's not a question, it's just a comment, though. But I, Shane, Shane, thank you for calling in and answering, answering these questions. I realize you're fielding questions about a lot of different aspects to this. You know, this is just my, I'm just speaking my personal opinion. You know, I would really urge the schools to take more time to make this decision. I think it's having ramifications on other organizations and a lot of key community work around pre-K. And I understand it sounds like there's now efforts to try to figure out ways to minimize that. But I think it is going to have adverse impacts. Every time, and, you know, every time we've heard about this, there's a different story, different plan, just literally week to week. I mean, when we had a call with the superintendent just, just, you know, several weeks ago, it was as if there was almost no understanding of the impacts that the closure, the significant impacts it could have on Head Start in Buncombe County, potentially even losing Head Start's presence in Buncombe County to another county. And this was just weeks ago. I think Commissioner Whiteside's point about, you know, we're coming out of the most disruptive, you know, national, global health crisis in a century, disrupted all aspects of our society, but especially our schools. It seems like there would be a lot of benefit in getting, you know, a year under our belt, once we are past this pandemic, to see how our school enrollment is working, how the schools are working, making sure there's plenty of capacity in all the schools for, for them to meet the needs, once we're no longer struggling with this crisis. So for myself, I would just, I, I, I understand the arguments that have been presented for the closure of the school financial. And you all have an obligation to use the resources you have in the most effective way for the education of our kids. And we, I understand some of the arguments around why a decision to close it would be made for those, for those reasons. But it feels very rushed. It's a very important decision. And it is hard to see how utilizing an existing functional public school as a storage facility ultimately makes sense. So I just, I just want to share those comments. We're not taking any vote on it tonight, but I just, I just wanted to say it since this is part of the school's plans for the coming years. So there's no other comments? We will, or questions? Shane, thank you very much for calling in.
Well, I, I, I really appreciate the, the feedback. And I'll be glad to, again, to share that with, with Dr. Freeman and the, and the board. And really, I want to make just, you know, one more comment, just in terms of, you know, one of the reasons that, that this started, you know, more than a year ago, was worry about the health conditions of the building. And, and many of the staff and some of the families had even come to was worried about the issues that we've had with mold. And then the concerns as COVID rolled in about what the building would, would, would happen, we end up in a COVID environment. And so I, I think it really, it brought that to the forefront. And I certainly understand what you're saying. It's very true about the pandemic. It's brought many, many things to light. And so certainly that's in our thinking. But I will definitely take, take your feedback back because obviously, we want to make sure we make the most wise and sound decision for everybody. So thank you for your, for your candor. And thank you for your patience.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Shane. Take care. And have a good rest of the spring break. All right. Bye-bye. All right. Commissioners, next, under Old Business is discussion about the Vance Monument Cost Share Authorization and Budget Amendment. And DK Wesley, Assistant Buncombe County Manager, will present this item.
Hello, Chair Newman and Commissioners. DK Wesley, Assistant County Manager. I know that most of you have followed the Vance Monument effort for some time. But for the benefit of our viewing audience and those residents that haven't, I want to just give a little context before I pass this offer to you for consideration. In June of 2020, the Commission passed a joint resolution that established a joint task force to consider the fate of the Vance Monument, that being whether or not to remove, relocate, or repurpose that monument. April through 20, December of 2020, that task force worked, did deliberate work, and implemented a very robust community engagement effort to make a decision on how to, what to recommend to you all going forward. On December 7th, the co-chairs of that task force came forward and presented the recommendation in detail behind that recommendation to the board. This board then voted to accept that recommendation and directed County Manager Pender to work with Asheville City Manager on the execution plan and next steps. From January to March, that occurred. On March 23rd of this year, city staff presented five bids that were proposed for the removal and demolition of Vance Monument to the City Council, and presented a recommendation for one bid, which was approximately $140,000. That included removal and demolition, but also site restoration until a permanent decision is made on that land. The City Council approved that recommendation and authorized the city manager to move forward. In addition to that, City Council authorized the city manager to move forward with a community visioning effort, in an effort to develop a visioning document that will help determine next steps for that area permanently. Tonight, we're bringing forward a recommendation to cost share on the community visioning effort. The cost is estimated to be $70,000. And the recommendation is 50% of that cost, which is $35,000. So I'll turn it over to you all.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions? Or is there a motion regarding the authorization of the county manager to enter into a cost share agreement and an associated budget amendment, $35,000? Or planning around the future of what is, where the Vance Monument's currently located, that public property in center of Asheville?
Okay. I've got a comment. You know, this has been going on a long time. And I think everyone is aware of what's happened here. We was able to put a task force together, the county with the city, correct? I want to make sure, because I've had a lot of media and everybody questioned me about this, of what we done. And I will make it clear that we put a committee together, they had a committee, and we voted to listen to what they said, not that we agreed with it, that we make, and stop me if I'm wrong on any of this, but I want to make sure I'm saying it right, that we never agreed to tear it down. We listened to their recommendation of what the task force come back with. We do not own, we was told that that was owned by the city, not the county, that we could not vote on that. So, long story short, I will not be supporting that we give one dime to tear it down since we did not have a say so in it.
So I'll just make a couple of comments, just kind of, you know, speaking for myself on those, those kind of questions around the process. So we did have a joint task force made up of folks appointed by the City Council and the County Commission. The Vance Monument is, in the, in the underlying property, is owned by the city. It's not owned by the county. So I think it is all legally the City Council's decision about what happens on their property. I mean, if, if we did take a position on it, you know, it would be just kind of us sharing our opinion about it, just, just like if they had an opinion about some county-owned property. I think specifically, the Commission voted to accept the committee's recommendations, you know, and that might mean different things to different people. Some people might say, you know, I accept what you're saying, you know, but it's, it's, it wasn't a, it wasn't a specific endorsement in that sense. So I, I think that, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mr. Presley. I mean, I, for myself, when I accepted it, it was a unanimous recommendation. It means I, I accept this is the direction I think this is going. I think the City Council is going to support it. And the, the funds that are being discussed tonight are not to tear down the monument, are not to decommission the monument. The City Council is alone, or unless they have some other source of funds, is planning to appropriate the funds to decommission the Vance Monument. So no county funds are proposed to remove the Vance Monument. However, the City Council has made it clear they plan to do that. So there's a question about, okay, if the Vance Monument is decommissioned, well, what will be the future of this public space? And so the funds being discussed tonight would be contributed towards a community input process to talk about the future of that space. So anyway, I just wanted to understand, I just kind of wanted to share my perspective on kind of how we got here and, and, and potential next steps. Any other questions or comments?
A question for DK, in case you know. I don't suppose the city's made us aware how long the visioning process will take?
Yeah, they did provide a timeline.
Okay.
Yeah. So the removal and demolition should be done by the end of the summer. The work to start the commis, the community visioning project should start late spring. And the expectation is that the City Council will get a recommendation on those outcomes by early winter. So not specific dates, but definitely a roundabout timeline of when that will occur. So by the end of this year, recommendations should be proposed to what that might look like moving forward.
Okay. And, okay. That's all I got. Thank you.
Other questions? Or is there a motion?
I move to adopt the ordinance and support the allocation of funding.
Second.
Any further comments? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, DK. All right. We come to New Business. The first item is a resolution for Buncombe County Commissioners authorizing continuing contracts for construction of certain security upgrades of Buncombe County School Facilities. And Michael Frew will present this item. And we've got folks from the county schools here as well.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this is an item requested of approval by this board, by the Buncombe County School Board. Have here today Tim Fairley, Facilities Manager for the school system, and one of their attorneys, John Henning, who will fill in the gaps and be able to answer any questions you have. This really legally, from the county perspective, is a requirement by General Statute 115C, 441C1, which requires a local government, government to approve any multi-year contract to be entered into by a school administrative unit. In this case, this resolution is designed to approve specifically the engineer and C-MAR contract that they want to enter into for security renovations at the 47 campuses of Buncombe County Schools. And it would be effective only to the individual school projects that require expenditure over multiple years. So at this time, that's only the engineer and C-MAR contract. So as this process continues, and they would identify a project that needs work, if it's not grant funded or something that's fairly nominal, that could be within the regular budget authority as approved by this board for that project, then it would have to come before this board, either as, to consider recommendation of the School Capital Fund Commission, or just during the regular budget process. So in approving this, this board is not ceding any of its responsibilities and authority for funding projects or capital expenditures at the schools. So So, I'll invite Tim and John to come up and answer any questions you might have.
Hello, thank you for being here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, John Henning on behalf of the Bunkham County Board of Education. Appreciate the opportunity to, to speak on this with you. Mr. Frue gave you an excellent sort of summary of, of what it is. I, I think this is gonna be an ongoing project between the Board of Education and the county for a, a long time. So, I think it's important to also get in on the right step, that you all understand what this is. I've got kind of a summary, if I may approach, that I think will help summarize and kind of frame your discussion. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as Mr. Frue said, there is a sort of a box we have to tick that involves your passage of this proposed or something along these lines, resolution. The purpose of it is, and this is the thing that I think is important we all understand as we start here, is lobby security features of all of these schools across the entire school district. And what they've done, and I've given you just sort of a simple bulleted list of the process that we're talking about undertaking here, is that first, the Board of Education, they engaged a consultant firm that went to each of the schools and sort of evaluated where there were security needs and, and needed upgrades. And then Mr. Fairley had what I think is really a, an inspirational sort of a notion about how to do this. If you're talking about 44 different, it's 47 programs across 44 buildings, that's a, a lot of work to do. And, and basically, you, you, you never know until you go evaluate what kind of work is gonna be needed at each one of the schools. And unless you find a model that lets you figure out how much work it is, what it's really gonna take to do it, and go on and get it done as soon as you can secure funding and, and move on, you could be decades. I mean, it's 44 buildings and we're, we're just about ready to go on the first one. So, to try to keep this from outliving all of us, what we, the school system did then was in step number two on that list, they ran an RFQ process and selected from it a, a designing construction team. It's an Architects, Novus Architects, and Harper Construction for its construction management to be ready as we go through the list of those suggestions from their consultant and, and determine how, each step of the way, how much cost, what's the construction time, what's, what's the size of the project? Because you could have anything from $10,000 in door replacements, and that's all you need, up to the entire facade's gotta come down and we need to really completely rethink the way people come, come in and out of this building. So, you could potentially have, you know, many hundreds of thousands or maybe one or two million dollars. The next step though, so Tim would first engage the, the architect and the construction manager to evaluate these on the basis that they're, they've been sort of ranked and prioritized by a, a national standard that was applied to them. And from that derive a constructibility amount, how much it's, how much a bigger project are we talking about? And that's through step three. And all of that is paid for through a purchase order that he handles through their budgeted funds, Article 40, 42 money. That, there's nothing extra owed that involves the county's involvement to, you know, have to appropriate additional funds at that stage. And then it's not until we get to step four here that we've determined either it's a small project and there might be some grant funds available or lottery funds that can take care of a relatively small project. Medium-sized that might be in the capital outlay, Article 40 and 42 money already available and also would not require some, some new outlay from the county. And then if there are any larger projects, we will be coming back to you for individual project approval. So, I say all that to say, because this is clearly more than one year, we, we do have to tick, tick this box of your approval of this resolution that says, we, the county, understand this school system can't legally enter into these multi-year contracts for capital because they're, you're the funding mechanism. So, it's, it's kind of a, it's a formality that we will backfill with every time there's a, a hard number and a project that, that requires your approval of, it comes back to you. So, this is not in any way a blank check. It's not asking for us to, to run and do these projects for, you know, decades without the county's involvement wherever that's required. So, that's kind of a, a little bit more in-depth summary of it. I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Okay, I've got, I've got one initial question. In terms of the funds to, aside from the funds to actually go implement a project that, you know, whatever school is, ends up being prioritized high on the list initially. But just in terms of carrying out the work of doing this contract, doing the engineering and the analysis to analyze, you know, a high priority projects and then come up with budgetary figures for them, where will the funds to pay for the actual work of that engineering and analysis be derived from?
So, I haven't burdened you with two 70-page contracts that are for the architect and the construction management company, but they undertake in an initial design development stage from the architect and pre-construction, that they have quoted us a, sort of a flat fee where we, we get our, you know, pre-construction figuring out what size of a project are we looking at early on? And those are always gonna be within the budgeted funds that are already within the capital outlay for, for the school system. Does that make sense?
You're basically saying the schools, the county schools already have some funds within their budget for this kind of engineering and analysis?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. Are there any just kind of ballpark figures for what that looks like? I mean, again, I realize that's not the specific question in front of us, but I'm just, part of, part of me is just kind of trying to get a sense for sort of wrap my brain around the scope of this master multi-year contract, you know?
I understand, and, and we have similarly been trying to get our heads around how to do this in an efficient way that actually gets it done on a reasonable time scale. And it, and again, it's a purpose that I think everybody can get behind. We need to make our school buildings as, as safe as they possibly can be. So, trying to address them in a, in a really orderly fashion is important. I can't tell you other than that, again, they could range from, anywhere from a few thousand dollars in door replacements and that kind of thing, and that's all you need up to...
But, but again, I'm actually just thinking in terms of just the work of the, the firm that's been selected through the RFQ process for the engineering type analysis. Like, is this gonna be over the next 12 months, a hundred thousand dollars or 500,000 dollars or?
No, sir.
Just for the assessment type work, not, not actually replacing the doors or other kinds of security hardware?
Let me give you the example of the flat fee that the Novus Architects has given us for their services. For a project that is... Sorry, bear with me just one second.
Take your time.
For a project that is anticipated to cost less than a hundred thousand dollars, they give us a flat lump sum fee for their work up through schematic design of $15,000.
Okay.
And, and we've done the same thing with construction management, where their pre-construction work is similarly at, at a small project that we estimate at that amount, it'll be, it's tens of thousands of dollars that can be covered out of existing capital outlay budgets, you know, funds that are already budgeted.
Okay. This may be more of a Tim question than a legal question, but so, like the small projects, I believe, is it $250,000 and less? That's where the lottery funds can be utilized and it's over that where, like, it might go to capital commission? If it's a, what are those thresholds? Again, I can't remember off the top of my head. And then, and then the follow-up question would be, I know we're early in this process, but do you anticipate like a high percentage of them will be in those small categories? Or a lot of these projects likely from what you're seeing so far are gonna kind of elevate up to likely kind of consideration by the capital commission for funding?
I would think the majority of them will be going to the capital commission. $100,000 is the threshold for the Article 40, 42. There is no real threshold on lottery or the Article 40, 42. 39 is the capital commission funds that has the hundred thousand dollar threshold. But, there's a lot of paperwork to do for lottery and you're not gonna do a tiny, tiny project out of lottery that we would use our Article 40, 42 to kickstart a, a project to understand what is involved so that we can get a, a cost estimate for it. We've developed a, a prototype, if you will, that is a sequence of entry and vetting of visitors that will be different at each school. The physical outcome will be different at each school because each school is physically different. But, that sequence for security that, that, that we've agreed upon meets our needs has been developed. So, that's what we're kind of applying to each unique school and coming up with a design and then a initial cost estimate. And then from there, we determine whether we'll do lottery, Article 40, 42, or come to the School Capital Commission for funding.
Okay. That's my last question for now. So, again, and I understand it's very early, but it sounds like it could be a pretty, I mean, ultimately, multi-year, pretty extensive and fairly, you know, significant investment. So, when do you think you'll have enough information to talk to the capital commission about that? Just to kind of start, kind of again, kind of so folks can sort of wrap their brains around, okay, as we look forward, you know, the next few years, how much funding might the schools be requesting for implementation of these kind of security projects?
You know, that's a, that's a really tough question because there's a lot of needs and we're really gonna have to do it on a year-by-year basis because things crop up like roofs. A roof can be a million dollars if it's, you know, at the end of its life. And we struggle with keeping up with infrastructure. It's always tempting to kick that can down the road and, and do something else. But unfortunately, we have to pay attention to school security and this initial project is going to tell us a lot about how good our prototype is. The ability of a contractor to basically be able to do it over summer because this disrupts the office area. So, we really have to do these projects over summer. How many could we do over summer? What is the construction environment on small projects right now? And I would term a small project for the types of commercial contractors that we deal with is something under a hundred thousand dollars. You have to do a lot of work to get contractors' attentions, to provide you pricing and then to perform the work because they're, they're smaller projects and we're in a very heated economy right now.
All right, thanks Tim. Other questions?
I just have two very quick ones, thank you both very much. The first is, hi, it's hard to tell with the mess. I think this is understood, but I just want to be very clear. When we say school safety, we're talking about the threat of an active shooter situation?
No, there's...
Maybe can you walk us through some of the other...
Well, let's distinguish between safety and security, first of all. That, that's the first thing you have to do. Safety is tripping on a sidewalk, getting hit by a car. You know, there's, there's safety issues and really this is security. So, an active shooter is probably the most dramatic form of that. But, there are incidents almost every day at schools that are less intensive than that, but equally troubling. Parental issues with kids in custody is, is huge and there's a lot of emotions involved with that. So, there's kind of a hierarchy. Do you put all your energy and very high costs into an active shooter, which doesn't happen very often but is devastating, versus those daily activities that occur regularly? And we've, I believe we struck a balance and have sculpted visitor vetting and sequence system that will deal with both without totally committing to one side or another.
Thank you, that's incredibly helpful. I know you all are immersed in these issues, but for those of us who aren't, it's helpful to hear that, thank you. The second is maybe a question to staff, I'm not sure. But, back I think in the spring of 2019, I think it was, we had a discussion about basically addressing an issue where radios could not communicate to each other from inside, first responders being inside the buildings. And I, I don't know that we've had an update on that project since then, if we have, my mistake. But is, is that the kind of project that would fall under the scope of this or?
We've completed that project.
Great, okay, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, so the, there's, there's four different bands and we've gotten adequate coverage now at each and every, not only Bunkham County School but city schools.
Great.
Co-operated together, so we're in pretty good shape.
That's awesome, my apologies if I missed that update along the way, but it's always exciting to hear.
That is one aspect. This contract is really focused on the physical structure. Security is a multifaceted strategy, so there's administrative things, there's training. There's a, a lot of features, there's technology and such. This, what you're considering, and this contract is really written around physically altering the building to make it more secure.
I understand, thank you.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions or is there a motion regarding the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, thank you both.
Thank you all.
Okay, next up is consideration of administration of local fiscal recovery funds. And Jennifer Barnett, or perhaps, no, no, maybe Don Ward's gonna present this item.
Good evening again. Rachel Nygaard asked me to fill in for her because she's on spring break and I thought I'd be a nice guy for once and do that. As you may be aware, the, when we did the CRF funds, we were allowed to have administrative help. So, we came to you and we hired a grant-funded position for the duration of the Corona Relief Funds. Now that we're gonna be receiving the in total $50 million worth of American Recovery Plan slash Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, which is what we were calling it for our portion, we're gonna need administrative help for that as well. So, we are requesting three positions to help over the next two years. One of those would be recruited right away because we will be having funds coming in very shortly and we need to be prepared from the get-go for the reporting and everything else that comes along with that. The other positions, we would hire after we evaluate the need and that sort of thing. But, we would like to get authorization to do that. Budget request would come at a later date, as soon as we know guidelines for the local fiscal recovery funds and how we would pay for those positions. All right, answer any questions or?
I've got a quick question.
Sure.
I guess could you just generally describe, I guess, what kind of, what kind of administrative work we're talking about and what kind of backgrounds for these, these folks we're looking for?
Sure, it's the same job description that we used for the CRF funds and it is completely administrative in nature initially. So, it's the tracking of the funds, it's monitoring contracts, it's doing the reporting that's gonna be required, all those sort of administrative things. This will live in Rachel's shop, Strategic Partnerships, which is where the last one also was. Moving forward, who knows what type of public engagement we may need? We may need an additional body to do things like that. But initially, it's going to be just the administrative piece of it.
Gotcha.
There's a lot of work that goes into it.
Lot of federal paperwork involved, I gotcha.
We love federal money, we just... It's just a little extra work.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the creation of these three administrative positions.
Second?
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you.
All right, next up is introduction, first reading of an ordinance prohibiting discrimination in employment in public accommodations and Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrara will present this item.
Yeah, and I'll be doing this with Commissioner Sloan and with the help of Mr. Frew. This, I think, is the third time we've had an opportunity to discuss the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance and I wanted to provide a quick update around process and timeline from our last discussion. Since our last discussion at the commission level, there's actually been some revisions to the language that I, that I personally am excited about. I think they strengthened the ordinance and clarify it. Because of that, this actually reboots the process of introducing the ordinance. And so formally to pass an ordinance, we need to have a formal first reading, which we'll do tonight with a discussion. And then we'll have a formal second reading at our April twentieth meeting, at which time we'll take a vote on the ordinance. So just wanted to share that update because we've gotten some community questions about timeline. And I'll just be very brief because again, we've had multiple conversations, but obviously, you know, there's some public comment this evening and I'm also getting messages from folks with questions and kind of a range of perspectives on the ordinance. And I just want to provide a little bit of context tonight about how we got here. This story of this ordinance could go back decades arguably, but it certainly could go back at least to a five-year point where in our, about five years ago in our community, we had a lot of conversations about passing a nondiscrimination ordinance. The city of Charlotte did so and there was a lot of conversation at the, about trying to do so in other communities across the state. And that conversation was cut short by the passage of HB two, a state bill that basically preempted the Charlotte ordinance and also made it illegal for transgender people to use the appropriate restroom in public facilities. That bill was, is a classic example of discrimination against transgender people in public accommodations. On the heels of that, it's, parts of HB two were struck and a bill called HB one forty-two passed at the state level. And one of the things that said is that local communities were preempted from passing nondiscrimination ordinances. That put a pause in the community-level conversations, but it didn't put a pause in the realities of what was happening in the lives of LGBTQ people in, in North Carolina and in Buncombe County. And that reality is, is layered. Many things are true at once. On the one hand, in very powerful ways, you know, I think we've seen support for equality and inclusion grow and people feel that in their lives in powerful ways. And we see more and more families understanding that there's LGBTQ people in their lives, more and more faith communities and faith leaders becoming vocal in their support, schools and teachers doing the same. And we see the difference that makes in the lives of people and enabling them to do what I think we all hope and desire and certainly deserve to do, which is to have an equal opportunity to thrive. We've also seen that there are continued obstacles to LGBTQ people reaching the threshold of full equality under the law. There's been progress, like the Supreme Court ruling in Bostock, which grants employment equality for employers of more than fifteen folks, but there's also been a lot of, there's been a lot of rollbacks during this time. So I just kind of want to paint that picture that this is not a new conversation, but what did change in December of two thousand twenty is that one section of HB one forty-two sunsetted and local communities no longer faced a legal barrier to passing a nondiscrimination ordinance. And that's what reintroduced this conversation in a more formal way here. I've been honored to be in contact with so many people in our community in the last four months since that time, including but not limited to many folks in the faith community across denominations and perspectives on these issues, many folks who provide direct services to homeless folks, particularly shelter, and also many folks in the business community through an ongoing dialogue with the Chamber of Commerce. The chamber actually conducted a survey of its membership around their positions on the nondiscrimination ordinance recently. And among respondents, eighty percent expressed support for this, believing it's good for the community and also good for business when we signal and create communities in which people are treated equally. So I just wanted to share that little bit of context that this is a conversation that dates back many, many years. And what's new in this moment is that we have an opportunity to take action and I hope that we will do that as, as this process progresses. I'll turn things over to Commissioner Sloan and then we'll turn things over to Mr. Frew, who will walk us through the content of the ordinance so that we do the formal first reading as part of tonight's discussion.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, I think having Mr. Frew go through this is probably what would be the most helpful use of our time, but I just wanted to highlight the housing section, which is the most recent change that brought us here tonight to, to talk about this again. And what, what really excites me is, is because it's, it's, it's an attempt to, to make it clear to the community and, and an example of, you know, through this, through this ordinance, that discrimination in, in housing is, you know, among the LGBT community on the basis of, of, you know, gender, gender identity and sexual orientation, that that kind of discrimination is, is not acceptable. And, you know, right now, under federal law, through the U.S. Fair Housing Act, the characteristics of the sexual orientation and, and gender, gender identity are not protected characteristics. And so that's, it's a really important consideration in the, in the housing space. So I'm really excited that we're able to add that. And that's Section forty-two dash six, if you have the, you have the ordinance in front of you. But yeah, I'll, I'll stop there and I think if Mr. Frew wants to highlight that, that housing section and kind of explain more about why that, or how that could, could be added, I think that might be helpful. But yeah, just running through, running through the whole thing, I think would be great unless there's initial questions from fellow commissioners.
Mr. Frew. Thank you, Commissioners Beach-Ferrara and Sloan. I'll, I'm not going to read the entire ordinance as proposed, but I'm just going to try to hit some highlights and some concerns that we heard from public comment and other factors. Just to touch upon what Commissioner Beach-Ferrara mentioned regarding the former House bill and statute, HB one forty-two did expire in December of last year. And everyone should know that on January thirty-first of this year, the, let me make sure I get this right, Attorney General Josh Stein's offers, office did issue an advisory letter and that's a pretty complex opinion, but what it says is after December first, two thousand twenty, local governments in North Carolina may enact or amend ordinances regulating private employment practices or public accommodations. So with that, this ordinance, we worked to try to avoid pitfalls we've learned and heard about from other communities. So this does not involve any criminal enforcement, there's no civil enforcement rights in third parties, and there's no separate entity which would investigate or enforce provisions of the ordinance. And it'd be designed as simply a North Carolina general statute, one fifty-three A, one-two-one general police power. So first off, what this does essentially is expand the protected classes of, of citizens and lifestyles. So in addition, I should back up. We all, we've all heard and someone mentioned the nineteen sixty-four Civil Rights Act and we have protected classes and back then that was fairly short. It's been expanded over time and there's no set definition of what those protected classes have to be. So that would, in my mind, see that there is some wiggle room as to what those protected classes are and how they should be defined. What this has here is that any difference in treatment, discrimination means any difference in treatment based on race, natural hair or hairstyles, ethnicity, creed, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender, identity or expression, national origin or ancestry, marital or familial status, pregnancy, veteran status, religious belief or non-belief, age or disability. Some of those, none of those are entirely new. We've heard public comment about that as well. It's, it's the protections and how enforcement might be implemented. So first, discrimination in employment is prohibited by this ordinance, so I'll just refer to it as the protected classes, the new expanded protected class rather than reading the whole thing. But it shall be unlawful for any employer, because of one of these protected classes, to refuse to hire or otherwise discriminate against that person with respect to higher tenure conditions or privileges, privileges of employment or any matter directly or indirectly related to employment. So there's a number of exceptions involved here in Section four point two-three as proposed. An employer, it is not, it shall not be unlawful for an employer to employ, admit, classify or refer to any individual on the basis of one of these protected classes in those certain instances where those protected classes is a bona fide occupational qualification reasonably necessary to the normal operations of that particular business or enterprise. It is not unlawful in the same situations, due to religious belief or non-belief, age or disability status is a bona fide occupational qualification of employment. It is not unlawful for a school, college, university or other educational institution of higher learning in whole or part, in substantial part, for owned, for property owned, supported, controlled or managed by a particular religion or by a particular religious corporation, association or society, when learning is directed toward propagation of a particular religion. There was a comment about the, the concern regarding corporations, association or society. If three of us walk out in the hall, we could be, you know, we're, we're associated in some way, shape or form. It's not a, it's not a formal designation, it's just a group or an association. Some churches form corporations, many do not, an assembly or would cover that. It would not be unlawful for an employer to apply different standards of compensation or different terms, conditions or privileges of employment pursuant to a bona fide seniority merit system. It should not be unlawful for an employer to give or to act upon the results of any professional development ability test, provided the test is not designed or intended or used to discriminate based on one of the protected classes. It should not be unlawful for an employer to differentiate upon basis of sex in determining the amount of wages if the differentiation is authorized as provided, as provided for by the Fair Labor Standards Act. And it shall not be unlawful for an employer to refuse or to assign individual job classifications regarding transmittal to others in the handling of food in order to avoid infectious or communicable diseases. There is a number of exceptions, six here regarding, it's not unlawful for employment in this section, it's not a violation of this ordinance for an employer to adopt or administer reasonable policies or procedures related to drug testing, drug or alcohol use in the workplace, what require that employee shall not be under the influence or alcohol or engaging in illegal drug use in the workplace and hold them accountable and to the same qualification standards as other employees. Other miscellaneous provisions against discrimination based upon disability shall not be construed to prohibit or restrict what insurance companies and hospitals and medical service providers have to do and do do on a regular day system will continue to do for any person or organization organized from establishing, sponsoring or administering the terms of a bona fide benefit plan that are based on underwriting risks for any person covered by the ordinance from establishing, sponsoring the terms of a bona fide benefit plan. Again, similarly for accommodation, aid, service, opportunity. So they, it wouldn't be determined to be a disability for those to choose not to accept such an accommodation. Nothing would be construed to prohibit compulsory retirement pursuant to a bona fide retirement benefit plan. And then we move on to discrimination in public accommodations prohibited. And I'll read through this. It shall be unlawful for any proprietor or their employer, keeper or manager in a place of public accommodation to deny any person except for reasons applicable alike to all persons, regardless of those protected classes, the full enjoyment of the accommodations, advantages, facilities or privilege thereof. So public accommodation, it means any place, facility, store or other establishment which supplies accommodations, good or services to the public. And the exception for that section, prohibiting discrimination, public accommodation shall not apply to a private club or other establishments not in fact open to the public. The housing section, again, that was pointed out by Commissioner Sloan, that through this, through the administration of this ordinance, the county will assist residents in filling or filing housing discrimination claims with the North Carolina Human Relations Commission. And that's a, that's a vehicle in, in the state government, which is actively dealing with that on a daily basis. And offering this assistance inconsistent with recent United States Supreme Court decision in Bostock, Buncombe County interprets the prohibition on discrimination in housing to include discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity and also hairstyles. The enforcement provisions would call for an equity officer or such other person as designated by the county manager. The enforcement has various levels of attempts to a conciliation to get the parties to, at the very least, agree to disagree. It's not intended to punish, but intended, intended to work toward, make every reasonable effort for those conciliation efforts. And if those fail, then the, that equity officer could issue a written declaration that efforts to conciliate have failed and then may issue penalties as authorized herein. Now that could be one hundred dollar civil penalty. It could, in certain circumstances, each twenty-four hour period could be construed as a separate offense. Any such final decision of such a violation for equal protection component may be appealed to a panel consisting of the assistant county manager, a staff attorney and the strategic partnership director. And any, any appeals must be in writing and delivered to the clerk of the board of commission within ten days. One other thing that everyone should understand is nothing this ordinance shall be interpreted or applied so as to create any requirement, power, duty and conflict with any existing law, federal or state law. I'll try to answer any questions you have, but that's, that's the ordinance in a, more than a nutshell.
Thank you, Mr. Frew. Commissioners, are there any questions at this time? We're not voting on this tonight, we're just doing the first reading. So any other questions or comments at this time? All right, thank you, Mr. Frew.
Yes, sir.
All right. The last item in our new business is revisiting the topic of public attendance at commissioner meetings. This is a topic we discussed.
Yeah.
One or two meetings ago. The staff have put forward some ideas around how we can, when we do begin allowing in-person public comments again, how we can do that in a safe manner as we still work through, hopefully, the last stages of the COVID pandemic. I think we had a good discussion about this. My takeaway was that there was a lot of support for this approach. Once we do resume it, I think the questions were, when do we resume it? And when we resume it, do we, do we move from, we've been all virtual, do we replace it with the in-person comments? Or do we do both? So I had a suggestion I want to put forward, just as an idea, maybe kick off the conversation. You know, the, I mean, as we heard earlier from Stacey Saunders, the vaccination efforts continue to really ramp up. Great news, you know, increasing percentages of people have been vaccinated at least once, if not twice, and that's going to continue to ramp up as we know over the coming weeks. How about if we take a kind of a two-step process, first with a hybrid approach where we would have in-person public comments for those who want to do it, but at least for some period of time, people could still call in? My, my suggestion would be that we start that at our first meeting in May, we'll have two meetings in May, so that would be basically a month from now. So our next meeting would still be virtual, but I'd. But our first meeting in May, we would give people both options. And then do that for our meetings in May. And then our first meeting in June, we would move to in-person. And obviously, we can adjust that schedule if, I mean, my sense is that by June, late May, like, I think most everyone who wants to get a vaccine will probably have access to, at least gotten one vaccine. And as folks I'm sure have heard, you know, there's a lot of protection that accrues with that pretty quickly. So, but we can always adjust the schedule if things are not going as well as I think we hoped they would be. So what do folks think about that? So one more meeting, as we're doing it now. May is sort of a hybrid. And then, and then June, if things are going well, we would shift to the in-person comments. I mean, the in-person protocols, using these protocols that the staff have recommended. It may be that within a month or two of that, we've really beaten this pandemic, and we might be able to further go back to kind of the public comments that we've had, which without as much social distancing requirements. But I think that's probably too far out in the future to really figure that out yet. So I just thought I would put that forward for discussion.
I'm okay with that. But now, would public comments still have to call in Thursday, Friday, and Monday by five to say they're going to do it virtual or in-person, or just show up?
Good question. Avril or Lamar, what are y'all's thoughts on that? If you're gonna, if you're gonna do virtual, you probably need to sign up in advance, right? But what if you're coming here in person? How early do you have to do that? Or can you just show up at the meeting and do it that way?
I think if they're coming in person, they can just show up.
Okay.
We would need to have the virtual sign up that we do now. But if they're showing up, they can show up.
Okay.
That would be my preference, but.
All right. Any other thoughts? Does that sound like a game plan for now? Okay.
So, Commissioner, can I, can I add one?
Sure thing. Yeah, of course.
As we look at the matrix that Stacey comes in every week, I would want to make sure if they have a recommendation that we do anything differently, then that's what we would follow, using public health guidance as well. So that was my only other ask.
That sounds good. Why don't we just formalize this? I'll make a motion that, starting at our first meeting in May, we will begin utilizing the in-person public comment options outlined, or procedures outlined by staff in the memo, while also continuing to allow an in-person, I mean, a remote call-in option for our meetings in May. And then, starting at the first meeting in June, we will, we will utilize the in-person public comment option using the procedures outlined by staff, unless the county's health staff have any additional comments or recommendations for further modifying that.
So that'd be a hundred percent in-person, no call-in in June?
No call-in in June. Once we get to June, unless, again, unless the health staff or the commission decides to change plans, starting at the first meeting in June, public comment will be in the chambers.
A second.
Okay. Got a motion and second? Any further comments?
I guess I got one to get you to clarify. So they're gonna call in like normal for virtual, right?
In, in.
In May.
Yes. If they want to. If they want to come in person, they could do that.
Okay. And just, I mean, we know about how many people is usually here. But can we accommodate twenty or thirty in a waiting room somewhere until? I mean, I'd kind of like to see that they at least call in by Monday at five, where we've got an idea of how many we're gonna have to put in different places. Probably may only be two or three, but just in case.
You're, you're.
I don't want to be surprised.
Just for clarification, you want folks to sign up for the in-person comments?
By Monday at five.
Okay.
I mean, that gives them twenty-four hours to know if they're in town or gonna be able to do it or whether, if they've got anything they want to talk about.
Okay.
But keep the ones calling in on the, what, Thursday, Friday, and Monday by three. Is that making it too complicated, or?
I guess.
Let's ask the staff. I get the, I get the idea, but yeah. Staff, is that, is that workable? And this would not be an temporary thing. This wouldn't be like, just while we're still working through that.
It is doable, but I would guess we'll have the same call-in time. So if you're coming in person or virtual, it's the same cutoff. So it's easy to implement. So if that cutoff is three P.M. for calling in virtual, it's the same time.
What's the date, what's the deadline for call-in, sign-up?
It is Monday at three P.M.
Monday at three P.M. So why don't we make it the same for both? Monday at three P.M., you need to let us know if you're gonna show up in person or if you're gonna call in. And we'll use that protocol while we're continuing to do the hybrid model and then see how that goes. And maybe we won't need it after some point, but we'll give that a try. It sounds, that sounds fine.
Yeah.
I'll, um, as the maker of the motion, I'd like to incorporate Robert's suggestion into the motion.
I'm fine.
Commissioner Whitesides is agreeable to that as well. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Great. We have a couple of board appointments. First is the Early Childhood Education and Development Committee. Rachel Nygaard's not here to present this. Is there somebody else who's gonna present this?
I think I can do it, or Michael Frue could help me with this. But this is a reconsideration of a motion that was passed the last meeting where we extended the terms, and one individual was left off of that list. So we are just adding to that list another individual that is already on the committee.
And this is for the Leslie Anderson position? Okay. So this is kind of just a cleanup.
Correct.
Item.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Okay. We've got a couple other boards and commission appointments. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We have one position, they've served, we have one person who's served one term. I'll make a motion to approve Eric Robinson.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
On the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board, there's a recommendation to appoint Samantha Cole. I'll recommend we appoint Samantha Cole.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. On the Library Board, we have a number of applicants. The Library Board has made recommendations to appoint Sherry Turkot, Brandon Mays, and Leigh Anne Smith. And they are each from a different county commission district in the county. Districts one, two, and three.
I'll make a motion to, to seat Leigh Anne Smith. We need to do one at a time. Do them all?
Do them all. Okay.
I'll amend my motion to seat all three. Sherry Turkot, Brandon Mays, and Leigh Anne Smith.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I think that takes care of boards and commissions. We do have, let me do a couple of announcements.
Before you do that, if you don't mind, Chairman, I think at the bottom of your list, there was some information about some potential interviews. So just want to touch on that aspect. Would the board be interested in doing some interviews for the next April twentieth meeting before the meeting?
We are gonna have an Affordable Housing Subcommittee meeting that day at one o'clock, which will likely take only an hour and a half or so, potentially. So we would either need to adjust that meeting time, which we could potentially do.
We've got early childhood. That's too.
You can't adjust that, there's too many people, right?
We're right in the middle.
Okay. Then, so this is just for interviews. What time does early childhood start?
Yeah. It's actually for four positions, but five people have applied for the Planning Board, and two applicants have applied for the Historic Resource Commission.
At least seven interviews then. I mean, so one option would be to, like, do it at, like, eleven A.M., you know, before we have our different subcommittee meetings. It's a long day of meetings. But that's one option if we want to do it the same day. Another option would be to, you know, select a different date. Any preferences? And you said one o'clock is when you start?
Twelve thirty.
Okay. We start at one o'clock. So.
I would be up to eleven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just, let's just, let's just do it.
They should have a long day.
Get a good night's sleep before, the night before. All right. We'll plan on doing interviews from, like, eleven A.M. until approximately, you know, twelve P.M. or thereabouts, whenever we get finished. If there could be some lunch around, because we will be going from that meeting to other meetings. So that's, well, I don't know how many, I don't know if you're, are your meetings Zoom, Zoom meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you do. Oh, yeah.
Okay. Well, all right. Well, eleven A.M. the next, before the next meeting. Is that good, Lamar?
Sure, that is fine. Also, I want to touch base. There was an email sent, I think, at some point yesterday regarding a member of the Historic Resource Commission that was delinquent in attendance. And we wanted to see about some clarity on how you wanted to handle that. The city recommended removing this individual from the board.
Okay. So it doesn't happen automatically. We actually have to vote to remove. Is that correct, under our protocol?
Correct.
Then I would recommend we plan on doing that. I mean, I think the person should be notified of the concerns. And let's let them know that we're planning on doing that unless they, I think we should give people a chance to sort of come in and explain, you know, or send a letter or an email or something to explain. Maybe there's some legitimate reason. And if they really, really want to continue serving, I would like for us to be able to hear their reasons why. But.
Just, just to give you information, we were provided that city staff has tried to reach out to this individual numerous times with no response.
Okay. Let's, let's put it on the consent agenda to act on that then.
I can help you. I know him. I'm on a board with him. He's now, he might still have his house here, but they're living in Rowland.
Okay.
So I know the board that I'm on with him. He's resigned from that.
Okay. So that may be the issue, and it just may be that he hasn't informed them that, you know, he would like to be off of that board. So we didn't want to make it harder than it should be, but we also wanted to take this recommendation from the city staff on this position.
I know him, Brownie. I'll contact him.
Okay. Well, if we need to formally vote to do that, then let's just put it on the consent agenda to do that. And if something comes up where we hear additional information, then we can.
Yeah, I'm with you. I'll call him.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We've got a couple of announcements. On April twentieth at three P.M., the county commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at two hundred College Street, Room three-two-six in downtown Asheville. On April twentieth at five P.M., the county commissioners' regular meeting will be held at two hundred College Street, Room three-two-six in downtown Asheville. On April twenty-second at one-thirty P.M., the county commissioners will hold a budget work session at two hundred College Street, Room three-two-six in downtown Asheville. We have a need for a closed session. Mr. Frue, could you explain the reason why?
Yes, sir. We need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A five, to get instruction from the board concerning a possible contract or lease. And just expect no formal action, just direction from the board.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into a closed session?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we do not anticipate taking any action. When the commission comes out of closed session, we will simply adjourn the meeting.